Welcome to the May 16th Murfreesboro City Council Meeting. Councilmember Rick LaLance has our prayer and our pledge.
Okay, if you'll bow with me. Lord, we thank you for today. We thank you for all the blessings that you've given us. And, Lord, we try not to take those for granted. And, God, will you just please be with us tonight as we meet and convene the business of the city and help us do our best? Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two quick things before we get started. More under ceremonial. Today at the police headquarters, we had our Police Officers Memorial Day, celebrating the lives of the officers in Rutherford County, City of Murfreesboro, Smyrna, and our state troopers who've given their life in the line of duty. So, we had a good event and want to thank the Police Department for putting that on. And, just across the street, I just got back, but for our downtown postman, Pat Duncan, so he is the postman that brings most all the mail downtown. Today, they did a surprise birthday party for Pat, celebrating, I don't know what age it was for his birthday, but he's been delivering mail downtown for over 20 years. And, so, today is officially Pat Duncan Day in the City of Murfreesboro. So, we gave a proclamation to Pat, which was pretty cool. All right, you have your consent agenda in front of you.
Mayor, on item four, I would like to pull that from the consent agenda, if it's okay.
Sure.
You want to get through the rest of the consent agenda?
You want to discuss that under new business?
You want to discuss that under new business?
I think I just need to get some more information on it before...
Clarity.
For some clarity.
Okay. Maybe we just defer it?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to defer it till next week or something like that?
Yeah, we can defer that till next week. We'll pull it off the agenda and then we'll bring it back next week.
Yeah, that's for the banners? Yeah, okay, well, I'll make that... Do I need to make that motion?
No, we'll just pull it.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda after removing item number four. Second.
All right, motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to old business ordinance 19OZ-06 rezoning approximately 1.4 acres along Mercury Boulevard, second and final reading.
So, move.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit?
Who is the second?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Kurt was the motion. Ronnie's the second. Ms. Schreit, if we call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to ordinance 19OZ-09 rezoning approximately 90.56 acres along New Salem Highway and Clear Ridge Drive, second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Motion?
I was just going to ask a question about it, and just to want to make sure, is this the one where it's beside the Dollar General? Is that the one? And, I think we... I don't know if we got an update on that, but I think there has been some work done that we had asked to do and that everybody was pretty satisfied from that, from what I'd been told, so just...
That's correct.
I'll second that.
All right, motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have ordinance 18OZ-50 rezoning approximately 4.9 acres along Old Lescassus Road and Greenland Drive.
Thank you and good evening. Back in September, the City Council held a public hearing for a rezoning request for PUD, or Planned Unit District, for a 4.9 acre property located at the intersection of Old Lescassus Road and Greenland Drive. Property is currently zoned RS-10. It's surrounded by a mix of zoning districts, including RM-16 on the north, RS-10 on the east, CU on the south, and PUD and CL to the west. The proposed PUD would be called College Point Center, and it would consist of a commercial building on the east side of the intersection of Old Lescassus and Greenland, and four multifamily residential buildings located along the east side of Old Lescassus. The multifamily portion of the development would include 96 dwelling units. Back in September, the council indicated concerns with onsite security and opted to defer taking action on the project until the applicant could address that concern. Over the last few months, staff has worked with the applicant on a couple of our concerns as well. So, the most significant changes that the applicant has made to the pattern book, which we provided copies of tonight, are first, adding a security plan, which is shown on page 22 of the pattern book, and which was created in conjunction with the Murfreesboro Police Department's SEP-TED officers. Second, a commitment from the owner to not rent units by the bedroom. That language is found on page 12 of the pattern book. And, finally, the phasing plan on page 20 now shows that the commercial portion of the project would be developed simultaneously with the residential portion, as opposed to being a later phase. Enick Gerald from Huddleston Steel Engineering is here representing the applicant. No public hearing is necessary on this item, as one has already been held, but this is just the first reading, not the second reading. Staff can answer any questions that you may have.
So, with the standard for having another public hearing and running this back through, basically adding an entire building on the major corner there, that's not a new... I mean, because that was just blank and they were going to call it, maybe they were going to do something later?
I think that the previous pattern book had the building, but it was showing it as a second phase, and so that they were showing it like being sotted perhaps up until it was to be developed. But, I believe that the previous pattern book did indicate that there would be a commercial use at the corner.
It did, because we talked about parking.
Right.
We had a discussion about the parking that would overflow back to the... So, it looks like that there's been some parking that's been added as well.
Well, the... First off, I'm glad to see that the restaurant or whatever it is on the corner there, the commercial enterprise is back on there. The project's being built as one phase now, correct?
That's right.
Will the construction of the commercial property be done simultaneous with the multifamily? Will they start at the same time? There's no potential of building the apartments and not building the other, is there?
That should not occur. The way that the pattern book is worded, it deals with the certificate of occupancy, if I remember right, so it would behoove them to not build structures that they can't get certificates of occupancy for.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And, did any of the density numbers change at all from the prior...
No, it's still, I believe it's 96 units on that, across those four buildings.
And, I'm sorry, this is so old of business that some of this has left me, but the... There was RM-16 going to a PUD.
Mm-hmm.
There was some number of units that we could have had in the RM-16. What's the difference in the number of units? I remember also, I apologize, I remember from the original plan book, they had said something in terms of a number of beds or bedrooms or something that confused me a little bit, maybe it was 192 bedrooms?
That's... I think it was 196 or 198, and the idea was that they would rent those, being a college-oriented business, that they would rent those by the bedroom. They would rent the suites by the bedroom, and that's something that we discouraged and had them change. And, so, now that you will rent the entire unit, not rent out by the bedroom. As far as the RM-16, the map that I have pulled up right now does show that the upper, a little bit more than a third of the property, and it's a five acre property, is currently zoned RM-16. I suspect they could get somewhere around 30 units on that, as it is currently zoned.
Five acres at 16?
The entire site is five acres. The current RM-16 zoning is about two of those.
Gotcha.
I just want to make the comment that, you know, on page 22 or 23, the security comments, I really like being able to see that, that knowing some of the issues that we've had around campus, know when the applicant can address, here's exactly what we're doing, here's how we're going to do it, they're going to work for the accreditation that we have with the Police Department, that I think that's being proactive to show us how they're going to handle those, and especially committing to not leasing by the room. That's where we've had most of our issues.
And, if I can follow it up, Mr. Mayor, the two officers, Officer Hague and Officer Lamb, who work with the SEP-TED program, have been outstanding in being very responsive to our applicants, particularly on this project, but on many of the others that we've sent applicants to talk with them on. So, we're really excited about that program and happy that they are willing to put their time into working with us.
Okay.
And, I'll make one comment, too. This came through the first time originally. I was not aware of some of the crime-free MT initiatives that were around, but I sat through that class that Harry and Officer Lamb did, and I did not know this at the time, but Dr. Agarwal, I think evidently, is one of the more compliant people with the crime-free MT initiative. So, I was glad to hear them talk about his advocacy for that program. So, anyway, just general comment. My only concern is the increase in density on this, and I'll tell you that, you know, it's really a bigger picture concern, so I'm struggling with this a little bit, is to, you know, they're shutting down dorms at MTSU and, you know, moving this stuff right to the edges, and, you know, it's our police force that has to deal with the calls of service and all that kind of stuff, and we don't have the same types of... Same types, the same ways to handle issues that you would if it was on campus. So, you know, bigger picture, I'm concerned about more out here on the edge and shutting down dorms and not building new ones, but it's something I don't see... I mean, you know, I certainly haven't seen MTSU make any effort to let us know what their plans are, what they're planning to do. Does anyone know better than...
We've had conversations with them, and they are looking at construction of just some dorms. What they'd like to do, and they have to work through the legislature a bit, is to work... There's public-private partnerships now with corporations that will build dorms on campus. Student Housing work with the university to do that. They're somewhat limited now with the legislative statutes that they have on how they use their land with private entities. So, I think that's the first hurdle they want to get through, and we've talked to them and continue to talk to them to figure out how we could, as a city, may perhaps assist in that to some respect. So, that's where the discussions are now, but there is interest there to go back and build quite a bit more on-campus student housing than there has been ever in the past, from what I understand.
If there are other comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll now move to, excuse me, new business, Resolution 19R-09 regarding cross connection control testing water resources.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. Staff is requesting to increase the cross connection control testing charges starting July 1 of 2019. I have a chart here that we started charging for these tests in 2009.
Ms. Gore, when you say cross connection, you're talking about backflows, right?
I'm talking about reduced pressure backflow preventers. Yes, sir, sorry. These are devices, and I thank you for making me explain what these are.
Yeah.
These are devices that prohibit back siphonage of water into the water distribution system, so they're effectively check valves that don't let any flows from businesses or restaurants or other commercial-type institutions let water that could contaminate the public drinking supply. So, these are required by the plumbing code. So, in 2009, you can see where we started charging $35 per device. We're proposing to change that to 45. There are second... First retest, if a backflow preventer fails, we come back and we will test it at no charge. However, if it fails a second time, when we come back for the second retest, that's 60, which is a $10 increase, and the third retest is 125. Your original resolution showed fire line testing. We do test those fire lines, but we charge the $45. You should have in front of you the resolution where I've got the red line stricken. We changed it in the agenda, but I wanted you to see that we did actually modify it from when the agenda was originally published versus what you see in there now. So, just to show you kind of a peer review of what other cities...
Darren, before you get too far ahead, can you flip back to that last page?
Yes, sir.
When it says 45 per device for the annual test, and then it says 60 for the second retest, does that mean that you're going to pay the 45 and then pay the 60, or does that mean that you're, if you get tested technically a third time, would that be your amount you pay, the $60, or would you pay the 45 plus the 60?
You would pay the 45 plus the 60. That's why we give the first retest at no charge. If you fail and we come back and it passes, it's a no charge. It's just if we have to come back, basically, that third time, then it would be the $60.
Gotcha.
So, we did do... Wanted to let you see where we were in comparison to some other utilities around, that surround us. So, we're kind of just above Gallatin, but we're below these other utilities. And, what this does, this is kind of how our backflow preventers have increased over the years. We're estimating about 4,855 devices in 2019, and so, we're adding that $10 increase. It looks like almost around 48,000, 49,000 in additional revenue. And, if we looked at this cross connection, our staff and the expenses, looking at that kind of as a mini-business unit within water resources, we are... This would recover about 70% of the expenses that that subunit incurs. So, thought that would be of interest to you. So, I'm available for questions if you have any.
How long would it be between the testing? If you came out and you tested one... As a small business owner at one time, I often would see these guys come in, and they'd come in with their little gauges to test the thing, and, of course, I didn't have anything but a toilet to sink, so I didn't... Wasn't exactly sure how it was going to back pressure anything back into the system, but...
I understand.
But anyways, I gladly gave my $45. And, but the...
It doesn't sound like it.
It may have been a little burr under the saddle, but I still get... I paid it. But, if it were to fail the first time, mine never did, would it... Who picks the time? Do you just say, okay, we'll be back in two weeks? Or do we come back in a week? Or do we come back in a month? Or how long do we give them to get it repaired before? Because this is not the biggest concern that most small business owners have on their plate.
Right, right.
So, what's the timing?
I think we're flexible with that. I think that if there's a reasonable amount... I don't know that there's an exact... You have to have it, we're going to be back in 72 hours and you've got to have it fixed. I think depending on the, you know, the flexibility of the business owner and the flexibility of our staff, we will probably come out and schedule it when it's convenient, or when they can get a plumber to come out and fix it. I don't think there's a hard, you know...
Okay, so there's a reasonable opportunity to get it fixed before we're going to show up and say, well, you hadn't got it fixed, so you fell again.
Right. We don't go in there and try to jump the gun and don't give them the opportunity to fix it. No, sir. We work it out with them.
Well, they were always pleasant when they came, even though I probably wasn't, but the...
Because I funded your $45.
And, in fairness to you, the devices are a great thing. I mean, if you had a pressurized system where you were forcing something back into the water system, it could be extremely dangerous, so...
I sympathize with what you're saying. I do understand that there are some commercial businesses that do just have toilets and sinks, and the commercial plumbing code, though, does apply.
The gentleman came out and tested ours two weeks ago, and so, we were just talking about how many of those that they have to test, and I think he was telling me that, on average, they're tested... He has to test six, somewhere between 12 to 16 a day is what he tries to...
We just, last year's budget, we added a third cross... You can see the chart in front of you. With three cross connection tests now at 4,700, you just divide that by three, and you can see how many they have to do annually. So, yeah, they're moving on, and we are substantially less than if... A lot of utilities don't do that in-house. They don't have the staff to do it in-house, and they require plumbers, maybe a certified list of plumbers that are capable of doing it, and it's much more expensive that way.
We have one in Bedford County that we pay $190 a year for an outside person to come and tag it, so it's definitely a deal for the commercial business.
I'll move for approval.
Second. Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Darren, that was the best powerpoint presentation we've seen tonight.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we'll move to land use matters. Excuse me, ordinance 19OZ-10 rezoning approximately 3.55 acres located along Hope Way in the West North Boulevard Extension. This is planning.
Thank you. The... Wrong one, sorry. The city has entered into a land swap agreement with New Vision Baptist Church. The city has acquired a portion of New Vision's property on North Thompson Lane in order to construct the West North Field Extension. In exchange, New Vision has acquired a three-and-a-half acre parcel from the city. This parcel is located east of the church site and has frontage on Hope Way and the future West North Field Extension. As part of the agreement between New Vision and the city, New Vision has requested rezoning for this parcel from MU, or Mixed Use, and Gateway Design Overlay 3 to RS-15. If the property is rezoned RS-15, any future construction on the site would likely require the applicant to obtain a special use permit from the Board of Zoning Appeals. The Planning Commission considered this request at its April 3 meeting and voted to send this forward to you with a favorable recommendation. Staff can answer any questions that you may have before or after the public hearing.
All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name, your address, any questions, if you'll ask those to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes. As an individual, you'll have three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium.
Ladies and gentlemen, again, I'm here. My name is Master Sergeant Ross List, Air Force, retired. Again, I'm coming anytime to see if I can help keep greenage, especially this area here for the Stones River National Battlefield. If anyone does not know, the Stones River Battlefield actually started not just north of where Medical Center Parkway and Gateway it started. And, if people know, driven down the beautiful area during the Old Nashville Highway and turning into West College, it's really very a somber area. You see wildlife and everything there, and it's a nice area to keep green. And, I actually work on Medical Center and Gateway, and it's funny that I drive down Gateway to Wilkinson Pike the same way that forces about 80,000 in 1861, 1862 clashed. So, if you look over that lex in the next five miles, the casualty rate was about 85%, and then the mortality rate was about 32%. So, this is land is already... I don't know how we've been building on this and not finding things that are historical. I'm hoping that in my past, and I'm seeing the irony of Hope Drive, that we put something there and actually use this as a teaching moment, like Gettysburg or Antietam or Shiloh, because we are actually second, when you look at Stones River, in the casualties of Gettysburg. We are more than Antietam, we're more than Shiloh. Why not put a historical marker there and actually in the center and actually use trails? That five miles right there, Hell's Half Acre, is horrible. The slaughter pens, more people died there than the two other major battles. Why don't we use this as a teaching moment? My school of teachers here in Rutherford County, Williamson County, Davidson County, took us out to Franklin, took us out to Shiloh, took us out to certain stuff when we had Tennessee history. I don't know if we still teach that, but it's a great thing to do, and it teaches us about our history. Granted, it was a horrible part of our history, but it's something that's ingrained in us that we need to learn about. Why also remember that we used to save money to save conservation of our Civil War battlefields? I remember we used to do that for Stones River and everything. Why don't we take this land, make it a community center, tie it into the Greenway across the street, and make it something that we can use together? But, also, if we put something there, that's more traffic. I mean, North Thompson Lane, Medical Center Parkway, you know, that goes into horrible... That triangle right there on West College, that's the back road into Smyrna, back road into Murfreesboro, it's taking Old Nashville Highway. If you put anything there and it keeps growing, I would hate to see what that happens. Again, I say Hope, but maybe we can make this as a teaching moment. Maybe we could use something like Gettysburg or something there other than development. I remember when New Hope started that church, and I was very, very surprised they didn't find enough artifacts to stop their construction, because, I want to say, it was right at 80,000 people fought there. That's not something I'd want to dig in. So, thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 19OZ-06, Mr. Anthony, I have one question. The church, what are they planning on building on that lot?
So, they haven't submitted anything to us, but my understanding is that there's a potential to expand parking in that direction. There may be some other potential as well, but that's the only thing that I've heard.
Looks like maybe a potential for their road to stub into the other side of the, kind of the west side of the parking lot right there. You see that? Does that seem likely to come out on Hope Way and give them another exit?
Very possibly. Again, though, I haven't seen a plan for it, so not exactly certain.
Do you happen to know how wide that strip is? The width part of it? Going from kind of left to right?
I'm going to say it's somewhere between 200 and 250 feet.
Yeah, it's limited.
Yeah, when they came and talked to us at the Planning Commission about it, they said that they were... And, of course, part of the roadway they were building is taking part of the parking away from them, so I guess they would simply be replacing some of the parking that were taken away from them. And, the...
Yeah.
I mean, the property is currently just farmland, but I appreciate the gentleman's comments and his observation of history and what's gone on in that area, but those battles were fought everywhere, from Hooper's Bottom to all the way out to Hoover's Gap, Hoover's Gap, so...
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
But, the... But, they fought all over Rutherford County, and, of course, the challenge is, if there's anything significant, we generally do ask from the Historical Society, we'll ask them if we can go out there, if we know they're going to do construction. We've recently done that on Old Fort Parkway, where... Or Medical Center Parkway, where the, beside the fire station, the... beside the fire station, anytime the soil is disturbed, we generally go out and have some guys go out there with some metal detectors and see if there's anything to recover. Oddly enough, where Fortress Rose Graham was, we thought we'd find a lot and we didn't find anything, so... But where Trust Point has recently built, we did find a whole lot of artifacts there. So, some places you find, some places you don't, so it just depends, but...
I mean, I think in this specific property, pretty much all around, there's 20, Mr. Huddleston, how many methane gassing pipes do we have around that area? Is it 22?
19.
19. Because that used to be the city dump, is where that whole area is. So, now this piece of property is not on the city dump. So, I know that most of the excavation right now, if we did, we would find a lot of trash, I would imagine, so...
All right, well, if there's no more comments, I'm going to move for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Mr. Anthony, I know we have several public hearings coming up. What date would you like to do those?
So, items A through C, we would ask for June 20. Item D, we're going to ask you to delay because there's an accompanying zoning map amendment to come with that, so we're going to ask you for item D to schedule that for August 29. If it turns out that you're not meeting on August 29, we can come back and ask for a different day. So, June 20 for the first three, August 29 for the fourth one.
Okay.
August 29?
August 29. I'm waiting on somebody to tell me that August 29 is like a Saturday or something.
Nope, Thursday.
Awesome, awesome.
A, D, and C, and then G is August.
June 20.
A through C would be June 20, and D would be August 29.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we schedule the public hearings for A through C, June 20, and D on August the 29.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now talk about a storage tank repair and recoating project.
Mayor, council, thank you again for the opportunity. I do have a visual aid here to show you what tanks that I'm talking about.
Oh, yeah.
There you go. What you have before you tonight is the engineering task order to do the design and the bidding and specifications and inspection for the Mill Street Tank, Halls Hill Tank, and the Tiger Hill Tank. So, this is with Smith, Sekman, Reed. It's in the amount of $169,595. But in the bigger scope of things, the actual repair cost for these tanks is going to be around $2.37 million. The Mill Street Tank has had several coats of paint applied to it, and there's a certain point in time that a tank has to be sandblasted down to bare metal because you can no longer continue to coat, put paint on top of paint. It's starting to spall off. So, the Murfreesboro, home of MTSU, tank is going to have to be shrouded. It's going to, it does have lead. We have found lead in the, in the, some of the paint, the older layers of the paint. And so, we're going to be sandblasting that down to bare metal, and that's the most significant cost. That's probably about 1.6, 1.7 million of the 2.3. There has been a proposal for, by MTSU again, to look at that Mill Street Tank, to actually maybe put another logo on it, similar to the one that we just put in November of 17 on the, what I'm calling the Bloomfield Tank, over by Bloomfield Links. But tonight, we're just asking for approval of the engineering task order in the amount of $169,595 with Smith, Sekman Reed. But I am available for questions.
What does the $169,000 exactly get us?
The $169,000, it gets the, it gets the design specifications, the specs, the bid package, the inspection...
To rebuild a whole new tank or just to go up there and spray it off?
Just to go up there and sandblast it and repaint it and inspect it. It's, the inspection is a significant cost because we do have to, when you put, when you apply the paint, there's a certain mill thickness, and so you do have to go up, and when they apply the coating, you have to go throughout the tank and you have the inspector go in, and there's a mill testing type device that goes up, and it actually measures the thickness of the paint to ensure that they've met, met the spec. It's not just like painting a house.
Still sounds like a lot of money to, to tell us we need to... They're going to tell us whether we need to repaint it or...
Well, say that...
Whether we need to go in there and take the paint off down to the metal? They're going to tell us, maybe they come back and tell us, we don't have to do that?
No, 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 this is...
We're doing that.
They're going, this is, yes, this, it's time to take it down to bare metal. It's a several-month project and the inspect, inspection fees, I mean, inspectors are expensive and we don't have the in-house expertise to inspect tank painting.
My question is getting towards, are we paying somebody to tell us we need to take it down to bare paint, or to bare metal when we know we're already going to go take it to bare metal?
We know we're taking it down to bare metal, but they put together, there's also some repair issues with the other, the Halls Hill Tank and the Tiger Hill Tank. So, this is three tanks. We're going to be putting a bid package together. They're going to be putting the proper paint specifications in there, and then they're going to bid it and manage the construction of it, and then also inspect the repairs and make sure that everything that's done to the tanks meet the specifications that they, so it's, it's, it's taking it from cradle to grave in essence. But yes, the Mill Street Tank is going to be taken down to bare metal.
You think $169,000 is the right, is the, I mean, appropriate number for doing this kind of thing?
Yes.
I don't, I mean, I don't know.
It is.
Okay. Fair enough.
No other comments, I move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Wright, call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Let's, now talk about purchase, thank you.
Before you get away from that one, Darren, I was on the radio Tuesday morning and we were talking history on WGNS, and the question was asked, why is Tiger Hill called Tiger Hill? Do you know the answer to that question?
I do not know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
If anybody does, we haven't gotten an answer yet, so if anybody comes up or knows it, please, please let me know so I can pass the message along to those who ask.
Probably because that's how fast you go when you sled down it. It's fast.
Well, it was probably named after the high school mascot because the central high school mascot was the tiger. We used to go snow sledding on that, so I think it was named after the mascot.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Thank you very much.
That PowerPoint was not as good as the purchase. But you did...
I also, I have to tell you, Darren, I have, I found going through some paper, I've got a certification that was given to the water department in 1957. And I don't know why I have it, but it was in our stuff, and it's, it was at my home and I have to bring it to you, but it was some award that the water department had gotten in 1957, and I'll have to bring you a copy, bring you the original, so...
That'd be good, thanks.
Even then, we had, I'm not sure they had PowerPoints back then, but, but they were an exceptional department.
All right, Craig, we need purchase of intercom speakers.
He's here.
Schools, okay, sure.
This is the speakers required for the overhead paging system for Salem Elementary.
Any questions, council members?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any beer permits?
Yes, Mayor, we have a restaurant that's opening their third location at 4213 Franklin Road. We also have two special event permits, one for BEP Foundation of Rutherford County and one for Smyrna Laverne Food Bank at the Nourish Food Bank here in Murfreesboro. All the applications are in order. The Toots application does need to finish up their billing codes inspections, but otherwise, that application will be ready to issue if you approve it tonight, once they meet those inspections. The special event permit applications are in order.
Councilman Wade.
Second.
Councilman Martin, Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, I have a recommendation, Mr., we have the appointment of Mr. Richard Reeves to the Rutherford County Board of Equalization to fill the vacancy left by Michael McDonald. Mr. Mitchell had called and Mr. McDonald had a death and his, his wife passed away and did not feel like he could continue to serve. So, Mayor Reeves used to serve on that board, and Michael McDonald took his place. So, Mr. Reeves, because there's extensive training that has to be done to be able to serve on this board, Mr. Reeves has hopped in and said he would fill the term to get through this equalization part.
So, move.
Second.
Motion to second, Ms. Wright, please call the rule.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements?
No, sir.
Any other business? All right, I want to remind everyone, we have our meeting on May 23, so next Thursday, we have a 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, right, for budget to discuss. Any questions the council would have, or any changes we, we wanted to make before then, then we'll take the budget back for first reading on the 6th, and then what we'd like to do is to have it the week after on the 13th, have the second reading on the budget, and that'll allow staff time to then, with Cronos, input the, the new budget and have it ready for July the 1st.
All right. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.